On the grid rose seventy-one percent last year. Catherine Blunt broke the story for the Journal and she joins us. Catherine, hello.
Thanks for having me.
In your reporting, you gain access to non-public reports from an oversight body. Seventy-one percent increase over the year prior. What does the report say about the types of attacks on the grid, say gun shootings or other kinds?
Yeah, right. So specifically, when we're talking about attacks rising seventy-one percent last year, we're talking about serious incidents that caused some sort of power outage. And the report largely attributed the rise last year to gun damage, vandalism, and intrusion. And while it's impossible to know the motivation behind every attack, people familiar with the material have said that there is some correlation with activity around the midterms and the presidential election as well.
And is there anything more you've learned about motivations?
Yes. Authorities and those close to the industry are watching very carefully for chatter and exchange of information among people who may be politically motivated to want to disrupt the grid in some way and trying to get ahead of the risk in that way. But it's very difficult to monitor.
The report you cite, what information is included aggregated in it? And why is it normally kept under wraps?
Yeah, so generally speaking, information about critical infrastructure is pretty closely protected. And the reasons for that are bad actors don't obtain information that could help them plan some sort of attack, whether it be physical or cyber.
You mentioned that many in the industry don't want to publicize these threats because people could get ideas. But there's kind of a how-to guide that's already been published. Is a lot of this already in the public domain?
Well, some of this information isn't in the public domain. But I think that the concern is that in sharing highly specific information about how the grid is configured with the sort of the right triangulation, someone could get a better idea of how to inflict a major disruption.
And the utilities whose equipment has been attacked, do they also have reasons to report it privately to the government?
In some cases, yes. There's a couple of ways this information is tracked and reported. There are some instances in which the utilities are required to disclose what's occurred. But there are other cases in which it's not quite as cut and dry, but they do make voluntary disclosures as well. Once again, not publicly, but the idea of the voluntary disclosures is so that there can be conversations internally within the industry about potential risks, new modes of attack, general information sharing in ways that could be helpful as the industry tries to grapple with what appears to be increasing risk in this way.
A couple of weeks ago on the show, Catherine, we spoke to an expert in the grid security space at Bryan Harrow.
And welcome to our meeting this afternoon. We have Pastor Jeff Allen here. If you'd like to come forward and tell us a little bit about your church, and then if you would be so willing to provide the invocation, I'll ask all those who are willing to stand for the invocation and then we'll go straight into the pledge of allegiance.
Do you want me to talk in front of this? Okay. Hi, I am Pastor Jeff Allen. It's a privilege to be with you all today and to pray over you and pray over this meeting. I'm new in the area, just got here from Washington State. And I'm pastoring the Parkway House of Prayer Church. It's a community church filled with people that love God and love the community. And it's just a real privilege to be a part of this community with you all today. So thank you for letting us be a part of this meeting through prayer today. I appreciate that. Is it all right if I pray? Mighty God, we come before you this afternoon and we thank you for the privilege of knowing you and serving you. Thank you for this great nation and this great state, this great community that we get to be a part of. And we're just asking, as we conduct the affairs of your people today, that you would just guide the leaders. I pray that you would give them unusual wisdom and patience, that you would fill their heart with peace and joy. And I pray, Father, at the end of our time together today, that you will be glorified and honored and that everybody will leave this place encouraged and filled with your peace. I pray this in the beautiful name of Jesus. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Good afternoon and welcome to our meeting for February 28th, 2023. Regular meetings are held on the second and fourth Tuesday at 3:00 PM. Public hearings are held at 7:00 PM on the fourth Tuesday of each month. Deviations from this schedule will be announced. The meetings are broadcast live on RV TV Channel 3 and will be rebroadcast on Thursday at 7:00 PM and on Sunday from 10:00 AM until 5:00 PM. Board of Supervisors meetings can also be viewed online through Roanoke County's website at roanokcountyva.gov. Our meetings are closed captioned, so it is important for everyone to speak directly into the microphones at the podium. Individuals who require assistance or special arrangements to participate in or attend Board of Supervisors meetings should contact the clerk to the board at 540-772-2005 at least forty-eight hours in advance. Please turn all cell phones off or place on silent. Item A, opening ceremonies, roll call. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Peters?
Here.
Mr. Mahoney?
Here.
Mr. Noorth?
Here.
Mr. Radford?
Here.
Mrs. Hooker?
Here.
Item B, request to postpone, add to, or change the order of agenda items. Are there any requests to postpone, add to, or change from fellow board members?
None.
Mr. Kaywood?
No changes.
And Mr. Lubek?
Yes, Madam Chair. I would ask to remove item H2 because the petitioner has withdrawn their petition.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Item C, new business. Resolution approving an interim agreement between Roanoke County and GNH Contracting Incorporated regarding pre-construction services for the Bonzak Fire Station. Mr. Lubek, County Attorney.
Good afternoon again, Madam Chair and members of the board. I would first like to recognize the presence of Mr. Acid and Mr. Honaker and perhaps even invite them to join me up at the podium or to sit behind me. They are the individuals who have championed this project and have negotiated the proposed agreement. And as the board is aware, the county staff last fall solicited proposals for the construction of a new Bonzak Fire Station, which will be located at 1465 Mexico Way, northeast, right over the border in Roanoke City. The proposals were solicited pursuant to Virginia's Public Private Education Facilities and Infrastructure Act of 2020, 2002, which we refer to as the PPEA. The county received proposals and through the process of competitive negotiation, staff has selected GNH Construction, Inc. as the vendor to construct the proposed facility. And although the proposed submittals by GNH contain extensive information, it is still necessary to refine the design plans and obtain necessary permits before beginning the actual construction of the facility. Accordingly, it is today proposed that the board approve an interim agreement with GNH regarding pre-construction services. These services include, among other tasks, design of the site, obtaining site plan permitting, review, and approvals, and further design of the proposed buildings. Pursuant to the county's adopted PPEA guidelines, the Board of Supervisors must approve any interim or comprehensive agreement that is entered into pursuant to the PPA between the county and a private entity. So if the board approves the proposed interim agreement today, it is expected that the board will again be asked to approve a comprehensive agreement upon completion of the interim agreement. It is anticipated that the interim agreement will be completed during June or July of 2023. This is dependent to some extent upon approvals being obtained from Roanoke City. If approved, over the course of the agreement, the county will pay GNH Contracting the amount of $3,367,950 as the agreed-upon price for these pre-construction services. And today, in again, once more reviewing the agreement, we did note one change that does need to be made. On page three of five, under the paragraph of time for completion, there is a reference to Exhibit Eight and renumbering the exhibits. That reference should now be to Exhibit Four, but otherwise, all is in order. Today, I would be happy, together with Mr. Acid and Mr. Honaker, to answer any questions that you might have.
Any questions of our board? Yes, Mr. Radford? I'm sorry.
Sorry.
Go ahead.
Can you give me a timeline of completion of the project? Assumed timeline?
We are looking at, good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. It should be a 12-month construction process. We're looking at July 2024 for occupancy.
Thank you.
Mr. Radford?
Yeah, George, hang on. Just a couple of questions. So this pre-construction services will get us right before we get to the hard contract?
Correct. There's another caveat. We could come back with another interim agreement. GNH, along with Hughes Associates, are trying to push forward the early site package, try to get that going. So we could come back with the contract just to do the site work and then a month later, come back with the comprehensive agreement.
Okay. And second question, have y'all picked a site engineer?
It is part of Hughes and Associates.
It is?
Yes.
Okay. Very good.
Awesome. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve item C1.
Second?
Second.
Would the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Peters?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
Mr. Noorth?
Yes.
Mr. Radford?
Yes.
Mrs. Hooker?
Yes.
Item C2, resolution approving Roanoke County's participation in the proposed settlement of opioid-related claims against Teva, Allergan, Walmart, Walgreens, CVS, and their related corporate entities, and directing the county attorney and/or the county's outside counsel to execute the documents necessary to effectuate the county's participation in the settlements. Mr. Lubek?
Thank you again, Madam Chair. The issue before you today is whether to approve this second wave of settlements flowing from the litigation commenced by the county against numerous opioid supply chain defendants several years ago. As you may recall, the first wave of settlements involved several of the larger opioid distributors and Janssen Pharmaceuticals, and this first wave of settlements was approved by the board in October of 2021. This second wave of settlements involves, as stated by Madam Chair, the defendants Teva, Allergan, Walmart, Walgreens, CVS, and their related entities and their named defendants for their roles in the distribution, manufacture, and sale of opioid products that have fueled the opioid epidemic. And after years of litigation, these defendants have now agreed to terms of global settlements that combined provide over $18.7 billion to state and local governments nationwide. There are separate settlement agreements that are proposed with each of these defendants, which have different terms and payment schedules. As with the first wave of settlements, the state attorneys general, on behalf of their respective states, first endorsed the settlements. Virginia Attorney General Jason Mieres has recently declared that the Commonwealth of Virginia endorses and has elected to participate in each of the pending settlements with these defendants. It is now proposed that Virginia's cities and counties, by resolution, also approve these settlement agreements. If 100% participation is achieved, meaning 100% of all cities and counties, the settlements provide for additional incentive payments. For the board's information, 100% participation was achieved for the first wave of settlements and additional incentive payments were received. Once approved, these settlements will be allocated and administered pursuant to the terms of the Virginia Opioid Abatement Fund and Settlement Allocation Memorandum of Understanding that was entered into by the county and the Office of the Virginia Attorney General back in 2021. These new settlements will be treated in the same way as the earlier first wave of settlements. Settlement funds will flow both directly to the county and indirectly to the county through the opioid abatement authority. And depending on the agreement, it will be over a period of one year to 15 years, again depending on the particular defendant. Pursuant to the terms of the MOU, Roanoke County will receive approximately 1.498% of the distribution received by the Commonwealth. And assuming 100% participation, which we had with the first round, my estimate is that Roanoke County will receive approximately $2.9 million from the second wave, which combined with the first wave and other distributions from litigants and bankruptcy, will bring the county to approximately six to 6.5 million in total. And in the board report, I referenced the 6.5 million in total. But again, in preparing for today, I realize that I did not specifically state the amount for the second wave is 2.9 million in my estimate, so I did want to emphasize that today. It is anticipated that in an upcoming work session, staff will provide more detailed information regarding Virginia's opioid abatement authority, including incentives that they are offering to localities to further increase our allocated distributions and how to apply for additional grants, both individually and collectively with other localities. I have reviewed the available information about the proposed settlements and concur with the recommendation of our outside opioid council to join in the settlement with these defendants. And I would be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Any questions of the board?
Yes. So what happens if we don't accept it or approve it?
If we do not accept the terms of the agreement, a couple of things will happen. First of all, we would not be entitled to the benefit from the settlement. So we would be considered to still be in active litigation with this defendant. The other effect it could have would be an effect on the other localities in the state if 100% participation is not received. For example, for Walmart, if 100% participation is reached with Walmart, they will pay the entire settlement agreement in one year. If 100% participation is not received, the payments will be stretched out over a number of years at a lower rate. So would have effects for both us and for the state. Yes, sir.
I just went off your first comment. You said, "If we were to approve it." I was like, "What if we didn't?" Thank you.
Any other commentary? So I just wanted to mention, and I know that you've given us a very thorough report, that this money is highly regulated on how we can spend it. So once we get these dollars, it's very specific on where that money will go.
That is correct.
It's not like just general fund money.
And Madam Chair, if I could add, we are planning a work session with you, I believe, at our next meeting to talk about this topic in much more detail as well.
Thank you. Thank you very much. So is there a motion to adopt the resolution?
Make a motion.
And second?
Second.
Would the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Peters?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
Mr. Noorth?
Yes.
Mr. Radford?
Yes.
Mrs. Hooker?
Yes. Thank you, Peter. Item D, public hearing. A public hearing to receive citizen comments regarding proposed amendments to the fiscal year 2022 through 2023 budget in accordance with Code of Virginia, Section 15 dot 2 dash 2507. Mr. Elliott, Budget Administrator, welcome.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. This is a public hearing to secure citizen comments concerning amending the fiscal year 2022, 2023 budget by adjusting the aggregate amount to be appropriated during the fiscal year by $6 million and appropriating $5 million to the county's capital fund and $1 million to the general government fund and accepting $170,081 from the Virginia Office of Emergency Medical Services Rescue Squad Assistance Fund and appropriating such funds, along with a local match of $170,081 to the grant fund, accepting $216,831.85 from the Virginia Department of Emergency Management and appropriating such funds to the capital fund, accepting $100,000 from the local assistance and travel consistency fund, and appropriating such funds to the grant fund and reallocating $396,507.15 from the county capital reserves, with $217,507.15 going to the grant fund and $179,000 staying within the capital fund for the purchase of two ambulances for the fire and rescue department and to complete the replacement of firearms for the police department, and appropriating an additional $3,876.66 from the Roanoke County Schools fiscal year 2021, 2022 year-end funds to the fiscal year 2022, 2023 Roanoke County Public Schools budget. As you stated, Code of Virginia, as amended, provides that whenever such amendment exceeds 1% of the total expenditures shown in the adopted budget, the county must publish notice of a meeting and public hearing. The notice must state the county's intent to amend the budget and include a brief synopsis of the proposed budget amendments. This notice was published last week on February 21st, 2023. Board action appropriating funds will occur later during this meeting. It is recommended that the board hold the required public hearing.
Thank you. Thank you, Steve. And I know the purpose of this is to hear from our citizens. I don't have any citizens who have asked or requested to speak. Do you have any?
No, ma'am.
Okay. Is there any discussion? Thank you. Thank you, Steve. Item E, first reading of ordinances. I didn't open and close. So we will open the public hearing and we have no citizens to speak, and we will now close the public hearing. Thank you. Item E, first reading of ordinances. One, emergency ordinance appropriating an additional $3,878.76 from the Roanoke County Public Schools fiscal year 2021, 2022 year-end funds to the fiscal year 2022, 2023 Roanoke County Public Schools budget. Due to time constraints for the project, it is requested that the second reading be dispensed with upon an affirmative vote of four-fifths of the members of the board and that this matter be deemed an emergency measure pursuant to Section 18.04 of the Roanoke County Charter. Ms. Peterson, welcome.
Good evening, Madam Chair and members of the board. As you know, the law requires the county to appropriate funds on behalf of the school division before they can be spent. At the end of each fiscal year, we go through the formal process requesting the appropriation of the carryover funds. The school board approved the appropriation of the carryover from last fiscal year on November 10th of 2022, and the Board of Supervisors approved it on January 10th, 2023. When staff created the line item carryover entries, it was determined an unspent budget for HVAC/ESER projects was not included in the grant fund carryover total. This occurred due to a necessary account change that had to be made in order to properly financial account and report on the ESER HVAC projects. I am here to request an additional appropriation of $3,878.76 for this grant fund carryover. This request is a necessary legal procedure to reflect the remaining multi-year grant budget balance within the 2022, 2023 budget appropriation for grants that were previously awarded and appropriated by both the school board and the Board of Supervisors. There is no effect on the purpose or use of the funds. It will remain as it has been.
So is there a motion to adopt the ordinance as an emergency measure with a four-fifth vote to waive the second reading?
Make a motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Would the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Peters?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
Mr. Noorth?
Yes.
Mr. Radford?
Yes.
Mrs. Hooker?
Yes.
Thank you.
Item two, E2, ordinance approving and authorizing an amended agreement with the city of Salem to allow Roanoke County to act as the erosion and sediment control authority and the Virginia Storm Water Management Program Authority for the West Roanoke River Greenway Phase One, VDOT UPC number 97171, located in the city of Salem and in the Catawba Magisterial District. Megan Cronice, Assistant Director of Planning, welcome. I'm so happy to see you.
Well, thank you very much. I'm so happy to see you.
This is exciting.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair and members of the board. An ordinance is needed to authorize the execution of an amended agreement with the city of Salem to allow Roanoke County to act as the erosion and sediment control authority and the storm water management program authority for the West Roanoke River Greenway Phase One, VDOT UPC number 97171, located in the city of Salem and in the Catawba Magisterial District. Roanoke County is developing the West Roanoke River Greenway proposed between Green Hill Park in Roanoke County and West Riverside Drive in the city of Salem. The 1.4-mile section of the greenway was phased in September 2022 in order to deliver the portion of the greenway where right-of-way had been obtained and design was completed. the portion of the greenway where right-of-way had been obtained and design was complete. Phase One is a 0.6-mile section of the greenway proposed with a trailhead parking lot on West Riverside Drive and will extend east along the Roanoke River to the existing greenway in the City of Salem across from Kingsmill Drive. The right-of-way needed for this phase of the project has been secured and is owned by the City of Salem and Roanoke County. Design plans are 100% complete, environmental permits are being re-verified, and construction is anticipated to begin this year. An erosion and sediment control permit and a stormwater discharge permit must be obtained prior to engaging in land disturbing activities. Because more than 50% of the regulated disturbed land lies within Roanoke County, it is in the best interest of the project and of the localities if Roanoke County is the permitting authority for these permits within both Roanoke County and the City of Salem portions of the project. A previous agreement to administer the erosion and sediment control in Virginia Stormwater Management Programs for the West Roanoke River Greenway Project was executed on May 13, 2021. Because the project has been phased, the agreement must be replaced to reflect the scope of Phase One. There is no fiscal impact, and staff recommends that the Board of Supervisors schedule the second reading for March 14, 2023. Happy to answer any questions.
So I just want to make a quick comment, and then I'll open it up to my other board members if they have any commentary, but this has been a long time coming. This is, Mr. Kaywood, I think you have even said that this was from back in your VDOT days, that you have some memories of this being discussed. And so here it is, maybe 15, maybe even 20 years later, that we're finally getting a portion of it completed. So we're very excited about this. I know that a lot of my constituents have really been asking about this for a long time, so I'm grateful for your work. It's been problematic from the get-go, and thank you for all you've done. So if there are no other questions of staff, I'll go ahead and make a motion to approve the first reading and schedule the second reading for March 14, 2023. Is there a second?
Second.
And would the clerk please call the roll? Mr. Peters?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
Mr. North?
Yes.
Mr. Radford?
Yes.
Mrs. Hooker?
Yes.
Thank you, Megan. Appreciate it. Item three, ordinance approving and authorizing an agreement for construction and maintenance of the West Roanoke River Greenway Phase One, VDOT UPC number 97171, project with the City of Salem. Megan Cronice, again.
Thank you. I'd also like to recognize that Lindsey Webb and David Henderson are also here. Lindsey's been running this project for a very, very long time. I'm helping, but she's carried the lion's share of the work with Parks, Recreation, and Tourism. And David is excellent on all these details and agreements, so I'm just taking the last step. But this item is an ordinance for the execution of an agreement for construction and maintenance of the West Roanoke River Greenway Phase One, VDOT UPC number 97171, project with the City of Salem. As described in the last item, Phase One is a 0.6-mile section of greenway proposed with a trailhead parking lot on West Riverside Drive and will extend east across the Roanoke River to the existing greenway in the City of Salem across from Kingsmill Drive. A portion of the West Roanoke River Greenway Phase One will be located on property owned by the City of Salem, tax parcel IDs 165-1-4, 178-3-7.3, and 178-4-1. Roanoke County and the City of Salem desire to outline responsibilities to construct, operate, maintain, repair, and replace the greenway facilities located in their respective jurisdictions with an agreement. There is no fiscal impact, and staff recommends that the Board of Supervisors schedule the second reading for March 14, 2023. I would be happy to answer any questions you may have on this item.
Any questions? Yes. Mr. Mahoney?
I want to support this, I guess. Is there in sight the subsequent phase to complete this, to go from .6 to 1.4 miles? Or is that, is that so far in the distance that it's shrouded in the midst of time?
Somewhere in between. We did mention, Lindsey brought to you in November, a number of actions for this greenway, and one of the things that was in that was that we would be coming back to the board with requests for funding to complete the preliminary engineering and right-of-way phases for Phase Two as best we could, to be able to apply for shovel-ready, construction-ready funding. So we are moving to that point. We do have an estimate from our consultants, and there are some additional things to work through, but yes, we will, we will be asking you for more money for it in the near future.
Surprise, surprise. I'm afraid of that.
It's worth it.
I'd just like to say, you know, I'm a big supporter of other people's money, so let's see if we can get some, let's see if we can get some from the Smart Scale Fund and talk to Dr. Sood about that.
That is one approach that we can try, though I'm afraid because we've already used Smart Scale Funding on Phase One and chopped that project in half, we cannot request Smart Scale Funding for Phase Two.
Oh, go ahead and lay it on the table.
There are other options that we could consider.
As for some of the federal money that they passed out in Washington.
And that's something that we would like to do when we know what, when we have it shovel-ready, but we're not quite to that point yet.
I got another question, too. You going to let electric bicycles operate on that greenway?
Yes.
Thank you.
Megan, by the way, I just bought an e-bike. I'm excited. But you know, it'll only go 20 miles an hour, because it's a mountain bike. We talked about that.
It's plenty fast.
28 miles an hour on the greenways. Anyway, if y'all see me on there, I can only do 20. Is the bridge in Phase Two to get across?
Both bridges are in Phase Two, yes.
Both bridges, okay. All right. And do we have some preliminary numbers on bridges?
We have had estimates prepared that included bridges in them in the past. I do not have those numbers off the top of my head. They are not cheap.
Yeah, they cost a lot more than they did last year. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. I know that there's been a lot of changes in regulation because this has drug out for so long because of issues beyond our control that some of those bridge regulations changed.
And ADA interpretations have been changing, so we've been navigating these hurdles with VDOT as best we can for many, many years.
Well, we appreciate your work and appreciate Lindsey and Dave. Thank you so much for all you've done. And with that, I'd like to make a motion to approve the first reading and schedule the second reading for February 14, 2023. That cannot be correct. It should be March, shouldn't it?
Right.
Yes. March, what number?
14.
14. Is there a second?
Second.
Madam Clerk. Mr. Peters?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
Mr. North?
Yes.
Mr. Radford?
Yes.
Mrs. Hooker?
Yes. Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Item F, second reading of ordinances. Ordinance accepting $170,081 from the Virginia Office of Emergency Medical Services, OEMS, Rescue Squad Assistance Fund, RSAF, and appropriating such funds along with a local match of $170,081 from capital reserves to the grant fund, accepting $216,831.85 from the Virginia Department of Emergency Management, VDEM, and appropriating such funds to the capital fund, accepting $100,000 from the Local Assistance and Tribal Consistency Fund, LATCF, and appropriating such funds to the grant fund, and reallocating an additional $226,426.15 from the county capital reserves with $47,426.15 going to the grant fund and $179,000 staying within the capital fund for the purchase of two ambulances for the fire and rescue department and to complete the replacement of firearms for the police department. Lori Gerhart, Director of Finance and Management, welcome.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair and members of the board. This is the second reading of an ordinance to accept and appropriate funds for the purchase of two ambulances for fire and rescue and increase the funding for the replacement of firearms for the police department. The wording of the ordinance has been slightly changed since the first reading. However, the various funding sources and the cost for the items are still the same. Just how the capital reserves are appropriated has been amended. So staff recommends approval of the second reading of the ordinance.
Are there any questions for staff?
Not a question, but to follow up Supervisor North's comment, it's very nice to spend other people's money.
It sure is. I like, I love other people's money.
We do, too.
I give a lot of credit to staff to be able to find all of the different funding sources. Thanks. Thank you.
I got one question, two questions, actually. You may not know this, but somebody here, Mike, I'm at the police chief, does, what's, what brand of guns are we using today for enforcement, and what's the new brand?
No. I know that, but I'll let the expert answer that.
It was Glock, and now we're going away from Glock to another one.
Good afternoon.
Welcome.
Madam Chair, board. We're currently carrying Glock firearms, and we're recommending that we purchase Decata firearms.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Is there a motion to adopt the ordinance?
I'll make a motion.
And second?
Second.
Would the clerk please call the roll? Thank you. Mr. Peters?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
Mr. North?
Yes.
Mr. Radford?
Yes.
Mrs. Hooker?
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ordinance amending the fiscal year 2022-2023 budget for the general operating revenues and expenditures by $6 million and appropriating $5 million to the county's capital fund and $1 million to the general government fund. Mr. Elliott, Budget Administrator, welcome back.
Thank you again, Madam Chair. We are presenting the second reading of an ordinance amending the fiscal year 2022-2023 budget for the operating, general operating revenues and expenditures by $6 million and appropriating $5 million to the county's capital fund and $1 million to the general government fund. There have been no changes since the first reading of the ordinance, and staff recommends approval of the second reading of the ordinance.
Thank you. Are there any questions for staff?
But, I mean, just for the record, I did not support this two weeks ago, and I have a hard time supporting amending to the current budget when we have $12 million of surplus from the prior year that could be used for capital needs. I just think that's a better use of those funds rather than amending current budgets. Just one thing for the record.
Thank you. Any other comments? Is there a motion to adopt the ordinance?
Make a motion, Madam Chair.
Is there a second?
Second.
And would the clerk please call the roll? Mr. Peters?
No.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
Mr. North?
Yes.
Mr. Radford?
Yes.
Mrs. Hooker?
Yes. Thank you.
Item G, appointments. Is there any board member that has an appointment that has not yet been given to the clerk? There being none, we'll go on to item H, consent agenda. Is there any board member who wishes to remove an item from the consent agenda? Is there a motion to adopt the resolution?
I'll make a motion to adopt.
And a second?
I was verifying that the item H2 is removed.
Thank you. Yes. Is there a second?
Second.
And would the clerk please call the roll? Mr. Peters?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
Mr. North?
Yes.
Mr. Radford?
Yes.
Mrs. Hooker?
Yes. Item I is citizen comments and communications, and we have Mr. Scaff on schedule to speak. If you'd please come forward, Mr. Scaff, and state your name and address for the record, please.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair and members of the board. My statement is entitled "Resoning and the Impact on Traffic." Are traffic problems caused by mismanaged development along with an inadequate evaluation of traffic impact analysis? During the Barnett rezoning hearing, VDOT resident engineer Brian Blevins attempted a justification for the weather wheel study omitting K-Spring Lane with county guidance. Unfortunately, the conclusion does not follow from the premises. Given that Barnett identifies neighborhoods north and west as the primary customer base, that K-Spring Lane is the collector's street for this area, that it already carries two and a half times the traffic of McVity Road late afternoon, Mr. Blevins concludes that residents will not have to use K-Spring Lane, quote, "unless they're going to this area to shop." This is precisely why K-Spring Lane should have been included in a study of the impact of a retail development. And why should this area be forced to use neighborhood roads instead of K-Spring Lane, quote, "other ways out of that neighborhood," unquote, as Mr. Blevins put it, because of traffic congestion that will be caused by the grocery store? The question naturally comes to mind, is the board contemplating any future development projects on Old K-Spring Road or McVity Road? Supervisor Peters gave as a primary reason for his vote that commercial development results in road improvements that would not otherwise occur. Supervisor Radford asked VDOT the status of the so-called "traffic improvement project" to straighten and widen McVity Road and create a throughway with Old K-Spring Road. Does McVity Road need to have a constant flow of traffic for its properties to be viable for commercial projects? Is the addition of a lane to McVity Road or a shoulder to Old K-Spring Road necessary? Will the traffic congestion that will inevitably be caused by the Barnett Grocery Store force VDOT to proceed with the traffic improvement project? One thing is certain. The McVity Road traffic improvement project is not a solution for the traffic problem on Old K-Spring Road. In fact, it would only make matters worse. This project would make entry from K-Spring Lane onto Old K-Spring Road even more dangerous than it already is for vehicles on both streets, as the maneuver would be nearly impossible. The project would eliminate the stop sign at McVity Road and Old K-Spring Road that currently interrupts what would otherwise be a continuous flow of traffic. Right now, the stop sign gives K-Spring Lane traffic an opportunity, however brief, to enter Old K-Spring Road. Moreover, the increased traffic generated by any commercial developments on McVity Road would simply increase queues and stacking on Old K-Spring Road. Old K-Spring Road has always been a country road. It has not evolved into a commercial traffic corridor and was not designed for the traffic capacity required by commercial development. In point of fact, Old K-Spring Road was never designed at all. Then Chairman Mahoney presented his aerial view of the county's road system as a wagon wheel with spokes of four-lane highways suitable for commercial retail development. While a convenient abstraction, this high-altitude perspective can miss the reality on the ground. A mere 280 feet, or 8% of the Barnett Development Site perimeter, actually borders Brambleton Avenue. The grocery store is not located on Route 221. It is located on Old K-Spring Road. If voting for increased tax revenue for the greater good of the county is the motivation, first, honoring the county's zoning and future land use designations should take precedence over sacrificing this commitment to tax revenue. Second, during the past four years, residential property assessments have increased more than three and a third times that of commercial property assessments. Third, the tax receipts from a future residential development of expected size and quality at the desirable Barnett location would be considerable and sufficient to forego this commercial development. And fourth, in this country, we do not sacrifice citizens' well-being for the greater good, certainly not to benefit special interests, certainly not to have three grocery stores within two minutes of each other. This is a slippery slope, as citizens in socialist and totalitarian countries find out. Thank you for this opportunity to speak.
Thank you, Mr. Scaff. Item J, reports. Is there a motion to receive and file the following reports?
Motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Would the clerk please call the roll? Mr. Peters?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
Mr. North?
Yes.
Mr. Radford?
Yes.
Mrs. Hooker?
Yes. Item K is work sessions. We actually have two work sessions this evening. Work session to review with the Board of Supervisors the county administrators' proposed fiscal year 2024-2033 capital improvement plan with Ms. Owens, and then the second work session will be to review the Board of Supervisors' fiscal year 2023-2024 employee compensation and benefits and outside agency funding, also presented by Ms. Owens. So the board will now recess to the third floor for a work session and will return at 7:00 PM this evening for the evening session. Thank you.